Good evening. I'd like to call our meeting to order. We have the prayer and the pledge by Councilman David Broussard.
All Father, Lord heaven, thou art in thy name. Thy kingdom come. Thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this today our daily bread. Give us your trust in us as we give those who trespass into us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil.
I am a delegate to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mayor Proctor Ricky Gonsalas.
Present.
Councilmember Brooke Markcott here. Councilmember Marlon Lewis.
Here.
Councilmember David Broussard.
Here.
Councilmember Deidre Ledbetter.
Here.
Councilmember DeeDee Johnson-Reed.
Here.
Councilmember Dustin Swier.
Here.
Item one is public comment. I'll ask you to put your phones on silent or vibrate. And do we have any cards at all?
No.
We have no cards, so we're done with public comment. Madam Clerk, two A.
Acceptance of the minutes, regular meeting of November 21st, 2023, which was published on November 28th, 2023.
I need a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Marlon Lewis and a second by Councilman Dustin Swier. Is there any discussion on our minutes of November 22nd?
May 1st.
21st, I'm sorry. Hearing and seen none? Please vote your machines. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, three A.
Special Ordinance Number 2023-2024-04, an ordinance amending the budget to actual appropriation remaining American Rescue Plan Act funds in the budget.
I need a motion to open our public hearing.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson-Reed and a second by Councilwoman Brooke Markcott. Anyone from the public? Comment on this item. I need a motion to close.
So moved.
Second.
Mayor Proctor Ricky Gonsalas, Councilwoman Brooke Markcott. Now I need a motion to adopt.
Motion.
Uh, that would be Mayor Proctor Ricky Gonsalas, I think, and Councilwoman Marlon Lewis. Is there any discussion on this motion?
And this is... Sorry. Just flipped it over. This was the remaining funds?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
That we were shifting.
Okay, so they've all been shifted now.
Once we do this, yes. Any other discussion?
If the public wants to know, it's what, 1.2 million?
That's...
The adjustment?
I don't think it's... Hang on.
If I'm looking... Yeah.
Oh, she's talking about the total.
Yeah, I think that is the total.
Yeah.
Yeah, the total.
Yes, I was just talking about the total.
Yeah, yeah, the total now. It's not where my budget adjustment is.
No.
No.
Okay.
No, just the total.
All right. Any other discussion? Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you very much. Three B.
Special Ordinance Number 2023-2024-05, an ordinance amending the budget to account for salary and benefits of public Pepperplex Maintenance Form and Position.
I need a motion to open our public hearing.
So moved.
Mayor Proctor Ricky Gonsalas and I'm not sure who had the second.
I'm motioning over here.
Dustin?
Yeah.
Councilman Dustin Swier, thank you. Is there anyone here to comment on this item? Hearing seen none? I need a motion to close.
Motion.
Second.
Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson-Reed and Councilman Marlon Lewis, thank you. Now I need a motion on the main motion.
Move.
Mayor Proctor Ricky Gonsalas and Councilman Marlon Lewis. Is there any discussion on this item?
I have a question.
If you have.
I can vote on this, right? Being on the Evangelical League Board? Because this has nothing to do with Evangelical League.
I don't think you can vote on anything on the Pepperplex while you're on the board. But I'll give that to you.
Yes, two different entities. Um, this is actually just to approve a salary for a person who will be employed by the city, not Evangelical League. I know, it's really weird and muddy.
We're going to turn that over to our city attorney.
Wow, let me think about this. Um...
Yeah. The ethics board looks at things really differently. I'm not making that decision.
Budget and salary and benefits. I think it's probably okay, but the safest thing to do is not to vote.
Okay, gotcha. I'm just trying to make sense of it all. That's all.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That's my recommendation.
Yeah, okay. Any further discussion on this item? Somebody else? Then please vote your machines. Thank you.
I will call about this and see how far it goes.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Three C.
Special Ordinance Number 2023-2024-06, an ordinance amending the budget to reflect cost of crack ceiling project and pavement marking project.
I need a motion to open this public hearing.
Motion.
Uh, Councilwoman Brooke Markcott and I think Councilman David Broussard. Is there any public comment on this item? Seen none? I need a motion to close.
So moved.
Second.
Mayor Proctor Ricky Gonsalas and Councilwoman Brooke Markcott. Now I need the main motion.
Motion.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Brooke Markcott and a second by Councilman Dustin Swier. Any discussion on this item?
Just for the public, still, this is the money for marking the streets that we can't see the markings on anymore.
No, this is the crack... It's both.
This is both, right.
It's both, but it's the crack clearing one too, uh, fix, repairing, because we have some asphalt streets that have cracked.
Right.
And this is the money that we had left from the first bond. And so, you're right, this does market, but a good chunk of it goes also to the... The reason we're doing another striping project is because of this crack ceiling, because it's taking a good part of that money.
Right, but for the people to know, we are going to mark some streets.
Yes.
With this money.
Yes, we are.
Like, for all those people who called me about Dale Street in front of the post office, it's getting marked.
Yes, and we have another project that we're fast putting together that we've been talking to y'all that will spend a couple of hundred thousand dollars marking streets.
Right.
More than we have in a very long time.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you very much. Three D.
Special Ordinance Number 2023-2024-07, an ordinance amending the budget to allocate funds for purchase of equipment for street repairs.
I need a motion to open our public hearing.
Motion.
Second.
Uh, I think it was Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson-Reed and who made the second? It wasn't, uh...
The more...
I think it was Councilman Marlon Lewis.
Double first.
Yeah, it was. Is there any public comment on this item? Hearing seen none? Motion to close.
So moved.
Motion.
Mayor Proctor Ricky Gonsalas, Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson-Reed. Now we move to the original motion.
Move.
So I need one. Uh, thank you.
Second.
Councilman Dustin Swier and Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson-Reed. Is there any discussion on this item? And I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you. Three E.
Special Ordinance Number 2023-2024-08, an ordinance amending the budget to carry over 2023 remaining donated veterans' funds.
I need a motion to open our public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Mayor Proctor Ricky Gonsalas, Councilwoman Brooke Markcott. Anyone from the public to comment on this item? Seen none? Motion to close.
Motion.
Second.
Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson-Reed, Mayor Proctor Ricky Gonsalas. Now we're back to the original motion.
Motion.
By Councilman Marlon Lewis and Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson-Reed. Any comments or questions on this item?
This is money that's going to be given to them? Or we're doing... We're working on a project?
This is something we do every year, and it was unfortunately kind of wasn't in the budget, so we added it in. It was left out of the budget, but this is something we do with the veterans every year.
Okay.
Mayor, how much is it again?
One thousand, three hundred and sixteen.
Yes, it's not a lot of money.
I know, a very minimal amount.
Yes.
I remember that money.
Sorry, I answered, I shouldn't have.
It's all good. Information's information. Anybody else? And please vote your machines. Thank you all.
You're gonna miss sitting next to me, Dustin.
Item three F.
True.
Special Ordinance Number 2023-2024-09, an ordinance amending the budget to carry over 2023 funds for narcotic investigative tools.
I need a motion to open our public hearing.
Moved.
Wow. Councilman David Broussard and a second by Mayor Proctor Ricky Gonsalas. Anyone from the public to comment on this item? Not seeing it? Uh, motion to close.
Motion.
Second.
Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson-Reed and Councilwoman Brooke Markcott. Now we move to the original motion. I need one.
Motion.
Second.
Councilman Marlon Lewis and Mayor Proctor Ricky Gonsalas. Any discussion on this item?
Uh, yeah, ma'am. Narcotic investigative tools, is that something that we can... Do we know the specifics or...
Kind of some James Bond stuff. You know, they buy a variety of things.
Right.
From gadgets and gizmos that help them solve to any tool that they need. We go through this, the money comes from their seizure money, but they get approval to use it. But it does buy from the mundane to the double oh seven.
And the reason I ask, because, you know, the public is aware that we don't have a specific narcotics division.
It's combined with detectives.
Combined with the detectives, so this is going to make those detectives better at getting narcotics off the street.
Yes.
I'm assuming.
Yes, well, whatever you give them to work with, whatever you give them that is a better tool or some... Something to gain some knowledge or helps with obtaining information, it's all a win.
Right.
I'm just saying, you don't hear about drug busts in New Iberia.
Well, there was one in my district the other day.
You don't hear about drug busts in New Iberia.
We also don't... As a PD, we do put things out there. We do have a Facebook page. We do put stuff. And if you look, you'll see a lot of... Because I see them. You'll see a lot of guns and some kind of narcotic. So, you know, right now, I'm not saying we don't want... We want it all off the street. But I do find that the guns get probably the upper attention, if you will. But there's many times.
In this year...
I'll look at my pass-ons and they are, you know, drugs and guns.
Yeah, they usually go hand in hand.
Well, that's kind of what I'm getting at.
Yeah. Well, they... I know they did a bust in my district the other day, so that was awesome.
Yes, yes.
We're excited about that.
No, they're working, they're working. Anybody else? And please vote your machines. Thank you all. All right, we move on to item four, resolutions.
Resolution Number 23-184, a resolution announcing the dates of the regular meetings of the New Iberia City Council to be held in 2024.
I need a motion.
Moved.
Mayor Proctor Ricky Gonsalas and a second was Councilwoman Marlon Lewis. Any discussion on our meeting schedule? Just pretty much set in place.
Right.
Thank you, Senator, for the nice calendar.
So the first Tuesday is... I thought it was January 2nd. It says January 3rd on here, so we're doing it on the Wednesday?
We closed.
We closed, holiday. New Year's.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't see this.
Yeah, no, it's fine. And it is why, you know, it's always first and third, but if we don't put a calendar out, we do get... We have probably two or three interruptions a year that, you know, we have to schedule.
Yeah, I just need to reschedule some other meetings.
We've got to put it out there, but I'm just saying there are a couple of them that are conflict. Anybody else? And please vote your machines.
I'll be M.I.A. for that one.
Dustin, put it on your refrigerator.
Yeah, thanks for the notice. I'll put it on my...
Yeah, I know. Item four B.
Resolution Number 23-185, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute all cooperative endeavor agreements by and between the Louisiana Department of the Treasury and the City of New Iberia related to Act 397 of 2023.
I need a motion.
Motion.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson-Reed and a second by Councilwoman Brooke Markcott. Any discussion on this item?
Yeah, ma'am. What is Act 397 off the top of my head, I can't?
That's our $300,000 that they graced us with.
Okay.
So during session, they passed this act and we got some money.
Okay.
Is that the architecture money for the... Are the study money for the pool, Aquatic Center?
It's the money for the pool to do the architecture.
Right.
Okay.
And it's the other money as well.
But the other $300,000.
And the other 300 was divided by 200, so each council member got some money in their districts that we need your projects very quickly, and we've been kind of pressing that. And then 100 is going as a match towards one of our projects.
Right.
Yes, so that's what it is. So it was a gift.
At my...
It was a gift.
I do.
It was a gift. And I will stress, get me your streets, because we have to spend this money... What's our deadline, Lainey, July?
June.
June, okay, June 30th. So we have to spend this money by then. So if you have any streets that you need marked, you know, please make sure they're in, because we already hired the engineer to compile the information, because we need to get that bid. Anybody else?
And the 20... The 20-something thousand that you gave each one of us, that also has to be spent by June 30th?
Yes, yes, that's the pressure. It was fun to do it, and it's going to be good because it contributes to each district, but we are under the gun to get that money.
So the... For my particular project...
Spin or spun?
Yes. For my particular project, since my park probably won't be up and running by then...
Right.
Can you order it?
I'm gonna order it, I'm gonna buy it, and I'm gonna get it.
Okay.
I mean, we're gonna spin.
And then we'll just install it later.
Yes, or they will be working around your equipment at the park.
Okay, cool.
Are we gonna announce what projects everybody picked? Because I donated all my money and I'm yet to hear any one project that...
Also...
I was trying to get everybody to finalize their projects.
I'm asking if you're gonna...
And then, yes, definitely.
Okay, cool.
Well, so I forgot Ricky, we're giving...
Yeah, I was just... I had asked y'all when y'all decided to pick a project just to let me call me, let me know, switch your opinion, but I haven't got a call yet, so...
Okay, we got time. This is what we do. This is our game day.
Okay.
Go.
Okay.
Dustin, what's your project?
We talked about the lighting in the park for the walking trail.
Right, okay, there you go. What's your project?
So I'm getting a sign for the Ann Street Park one that's going to be lit. And also, if I have money left over, I'd like to put a sign on, um... What's Church Alley?
Yes.
That shows all the businesses down Church Alley, so people would know where they are.
It's a great idea.
Good, I like that one.
I like that one, I really do.
You gotta like the sign in the park, too.
On the Main Street side?
Both of them.
Main Street side.
On the Main Street side.
Yes, okay.
Oh, mine will be, um... Equipment, park equipment along the walking trail.
Exercise equipment, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, good.
Exercise, adult exercise equipment.
Good.
Along the walking trail. That's coming... It's... I think it's finished.
It's just about done, and it's over a mile long, so you'll run out of money before you run out of exercise equipment, but that's a good thing. Thank you, thank you. And you donated to everybody?
Yes.
Thank you, Ricky.
After 15 years, we finally go get some sidewalks on Center. So it's a good start. The mayor promised me that through the years, you will finish Center Street sidewalks.
Yes, thank God.
Whether I'm here or not, but, uh, my money will go to start.
Yes, sir. And we're going to concentrate on yours around Pepperplex, Lowe's, and the hotels. I don't want anybody to think that we're going to start at the city line and make it back to Admiral Dahl, because we're not. But that'll be a good start. Thank you. Councilwoman Lewis?
Also doing outdoor playground equipment... I'm sorry, exercise equipment. Uh, waterproof, weatherproof, uh...
Yes, sir.
Playground equipment along... I don't know if it's going to be along the walking trail, but it's going to be out there.
Okay. Good, good. I'll get it selected and ordered as fast as we can, and then when we... For all of y'all, when we put it out there, we'll go select it. You know, we'll go find our sites. Yes, ma'am?
Replacing a swing set that's all rusted at the Pocket Park on Santiago and also including one for special needs children that can't sit up on their own. If I have money left after that, because I don't know what the grand total is yet, I like to find a utility box around Acadian Ballpark and put the history on there, maybe if we could wrap it, if I have enough funding.
Okay, okay. I might be able to find... We've done a lot of those. I might be able to find some money to do that either way.
Oh, good.
That would be kind of cool.
Very good, yeah, I think the history of the Acadian Ballpark...
We kind of scrounged the money to pay for the ones in the West End, the ones downtown.
Okay.
I probably can take that out of, uh... I probably got a little pocket I can reach into, because I do like that.
Okay.
We need our community and our kids to know their history.
To know the history, yes, I agree.
Cool. Good, well, there's all our projects, so...
I think that's all positive impact projects.
It is.
Dustin, what you doing, Dustin?
Lighting, uh, in the park and the walking trail in City Park.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. The lighting is horrible.
No, we get complaints about that and, you know...
Especially in the evening, especially right now, this time of year, people want to walk it at the dark, you know, so...
Cool, well, that was a fun opportunity to talk about our projects.
Yes.
Good, anything else? Then please vote your machines so they can happen. Thank you very much. Hey, Lainey. Four B.
That was four B.
Oh, I'm sorry, four C.
Resolution Number 23-186, a resolution accepting the resignation of Dustin Swier as New Iberia City Council Representative of District 6 and declaring the office of District 6 of the New Iberia City Council vacant effective December 20th, 2023.
I need a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Dustin Swier and a second by Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson-Reed. Can he make that motion?
Can I make... No, that's a compliment.
Can he cancel himself?
I don't think you ought to make the motion.
No, no. Okay, I'll rescind.
Okay.
I'll make the motion.
I'm not sure getting out of this job...
I kind of didn't think you should, but it was fun.
I'm not sure getting out of this job is a substantial economic benefit.
Oh.
But it might be.
Okay.
Is there a second?
You can be the second. So I have a motion by Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson-Reed and a second by Councilwoman Brooke Markcott. Is there any discussion on this item?
Uh, I think we should all vote no. I consider doing that.
That would be fun.
My Dustin.
Right.
No, we wish you well, though, Dustin.
Thank you, thank you.
I'll miss you sitting next to me.
It's bittersweet, but I'm gonna say my, I guess, my farewell. We have... I got one more...
You have one more meeting.
I got one more meeting left after this, so...
When he wears the catsuit.
Yeah, yeah, the catsuit's coming. Because we know you're wearing the catsuit.
Hey, Dustin, maybe you can donate your shirts to Dan or whoever's going to come on next. Well, he might benefit.
Any other comments?
The only comment I have, you stayed stuck on B for a reason because you didn't want him to leave either.
That's it, that's it.
That's why you did B again.
Yeah, yeah.
And Dustin, I didn't want to make the motion at all, so...
That's it. That's it.
It's all good, thank you all.
Well, it's been a nice three years to work with you, um, but you know, I still have your number. I'll still definitely use it and bug you about parish things now.
And I will most likely probably answer.
Okay, good, appreciate that.
Most likely answer.
Well, we hope that you will absolutely represent us on the parish council because, you know.
I'm not going far, that's for sure.
Yeah, we'll still need your help and we'll need you to, you know, be on our side.
Oh, I'm always on your side, you don't know that.
The only other thing, I was gonna actually pick a fight with you tonight since we didn't fight in seven years, but I'll wait till next meeting.
Yeah, we'll do that.
Yeah, we got one more.
We gotta, we need to have some time to stage it first and then we'll.
It might turn into a real fight.
No, it won't.
Any other questions or comments?
Dustin, good luck where you're going.
Thank you.
All right, well, cancel him out, vote your machines. Thank you all very much.
Oh, he voted.
Oh, he voted? Four D.
Resolution number twenty-three dash one eighty-seven, a resolution ordering and calling a special election to fill the vacancy of Councilman District Six of the City of New Iberia, State of Louisiana, and taking other matters in connection therewith.
I need a motion.
Move.
Motion by Member Term Ricky Gosselin, and a second by Councilman Dee Dee Johnson Reed. And although the verbiage says special election, it will happen in November at the regular election cycle, but this is how we had to work. So it seems a little confusing as if we would be paying for an election somewhere between now and the next election, we're not.
That's what I thought it was gonna be, and then I read my agenda and I was gonna question that, why would we do this?
Yes.
I don't want the taxpayers thinking I made them spend more money.
Well, that's why I wanted to explain it, because, because it's not.
Thank you.
You have anything to add Laney? Because I know you were very involved in that.
No.
No, okay.
Why do we have the word it's special?
Well, that's what I wanted Laney, because they told we had.
Come on Laney.
Well, okay, technically on the ballot in November, there will be two District Six items. One of them will be to serve from after the election, like when they're sworn in after the election, to December thirty-first. And then to serve the four-year term, that, like the regular four-year term, starting in January.
Because there's a gap of the time that they're elected to the next.
But the reason we have to have this special election is because it's more than a year until the end of the term. His resignation is effective more than a year until the end of the term.
Okay, gotcha.
So it's an unexpired term at that point.
Right, right, right. And we did this so that after we go through the publication, the selection process, all of that, we put, install our new person, they hit the ground running in January, we don't miss a meeting that we don't have the district represented.
Okay. And so, what you're gonna, you have the, the right or the authority to appoint someone to this position. There's not like gonna be people coming in and putting in applications or something like that?
No, we publicize it.
Okay.
Now, you have to live in District Six.
Right.
But we publicize it, that's coming, and then someone can put their name in, and then we come to the council meeting and, and we vote.
Okay.
Yep. Any other questions or comments? And I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Great, thank you. Four E.
Resolution number twenty-three dash one eighty-eight, a resolution accepting the resignation of James Jimmy Landry, a City of New Iberia Building Official, effective December twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-three.
I need a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Dee Dee Johnson Reed, and a second by Councilman Dustin Swer. Is there any discussion on this item?
Jimmy, why do you wanna leave? I was so disappointed when I read that. I mean, I know you've been here a long time, but we're gonna miss you.
Seventeen years Jimmy? That's what I thought, yeah, yeah.
Congratulations.
Yep, yes ma'am.
So, um, it did say in, on the information that it was a retirement, so why do we have resignation?
Well, he turned in a letter of resignation that he's retiring. I mean, you know, he's out, either way.
He turned in the letter saying he was retiring.
Yep. So it was a resignation letter, I mean.
He's clearly stated, I am retiring after seventeen years.
It results the same though.
Yeah.
Yeah, we still here, we still gotta do this. Anybody else?
I'm gonna miss you Jimmy.
We will.
You will be here either.
That was, that was funny.
That's what you asked for.
I know he's not gonna miss any of us probably, we kept him so busy.
Yeah, that's pretty true.
We really did, last three years, I bothered him so much. Thank you for everything you've done. I look forward to bothering, uh, the next person.
Don't put us on, all on call block though, because I might need to call you to ask a question or two.
Now, are you moving? Are you gonna stay where you're at? So I might still see you at Millside? Okay. I run into him kinda frequently over there.
Okay.
You're not gonna move to Youngsville or Bruceord?
Please don't.
He's going to River Ranch. That's a good one. That's it. Anybody else?
Jimmy, you look different tonight.
He looks happy.
He looks happy.
He looks a little relaxed.
Looks like some weight's been lifted off his shoulders.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm happy for you man, retirement is a good word.
Happy for you Jimmy. Anybody else?
I would give you retirement Jimmy.
Yep.
Long time we worked together.
Nothing further than I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you all. All right, four F.
Resolution number twenty-three dash one eighty-nine, a resolution appointing Matt Gallata as the City of New Iberia Building Official.
I need a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Martin Lewis, and a second by Councilman Brooke Marcott. Discussion on this item.
Can we, Matt, come up?
We sure can.
Tell us a little bit about himself?
Yep.
Because I don't know him. I mean, I've seen him a couple of times in the office, but.
Yes.
Our next victim, sorry, best friend.
I've been here almost four years with City Hall, so it's been fun, it's been exciting, it's been a growing period, really. I enjoy working with Jimmy, Jimmy's been a great boss, awesome boss, really.
We believe you.
Learned a lot from Jimmy. Um, hope to learn a lot with you guys, working with you guys, um, I'm only a phone call away, so let me know.
So, uh, I'm gonna need your cellphone number.
Yeah, we will need.
Yeah, we'll, we'll pass all that information on.
If you need your cellphone.
And Matt has all the certifications, he got here, he worked hard. Jimmy's giving you the phone. He's worked hard to get all the certifications and, you know, kinda prep for this, so.
Looking forward to it.
Absolutely.
It's an exciting time.
I hope that you'll be smiling like that in a year.
Right. I know it's a lot, I wouldn't want the job, and I'm so glad that you do, um, it's a lot. Like I said, just in my district.
Yeah, yeah, the good thing is, he knows the job, you know, this is a seamless transition because he, you know, he's at least had four years of knowing what he's getting into. It's not like some of the department heads that I've hired that didn't have a clue, and then four or five months later, like, what did I get myself into? He, he at least knows what he's getting into.
Yeah, that's good.
So, ma'am, we'll be.
So someone's gonna take your place, right?
Yeah, that's what I was about to add.
Yes, yeah, so we are, uh, we, this is a big step to appoint him tonight, and then we'll, we actually have a couple of applications, so we're already looking. Uh, we'll need to fill that spot, and then Matt and I are already meeting and talking about, you know, how, how things are gonna go. But, uh, that's an important step, we have to get, and I'm sure the next person will come in like Matt did, they'll have a year to pass the test, to get all the certifications and everything, you're not gonna find somebody who has all of that. But, yeah, that'll be the next step.
Okay, well, that's good, and I think we probably had another position, but I guess you guys will figure that out later, that we approved in the budget.
Yeah, we're looking at some, uh, we, we've had one meeting so far, and we're gonna kinda consider our options and get started is the big important thing, get, get his position filled, and then get going, and then we'll make up our mind, you know, what we're gonna do.
Okay.
But it's good to have that option.
Yes.
Definitely.
Because when you start getting those phone calls and you can't get your regular day-to-day work done, you're gonna be like, give me that other person. Well, welcome.
Yes ma'am.
In this role.
Congratulations Matt.
We didn't vote yet.
No, we didn't yet, no, yeah, that's why I was just, yeah, no. Any other questions or comments? That's where I was heading.
I mean, who's gonna vote no? We need somebody. Desperately.
That's funny.
We should've voted no on Jimmy, we were gonna vote no.
Any other questions or comments? Then please vote your machines. Thank you. Now I can say congratulations.
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 Yep. Four G.
Resolution number twenty-three dash one ninety, a resolution authorizing the extension of the agreement between RCX Sports LLC and the City of New Iberia related to the hosting of a twenty-twenty-four Junior NBA League season.
I need a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Martin Lewis, and a second by Councilwoman Brooke Marcott. Discussion on this item.
Oh, we, so we have the.
We did the NBA thing last year.
Right.
So we still have the agreement, we're gonna extend it and do it again, because it was successful.
Yes, it was really cool.
That's something I'm really looking forward to, so, uh, kinda excited that we get to do it again.
Yeah, it'd be awesome. Can we make sure we publish the schedule, like, you know?
We sure can, we sure can.
So people can come and watch the kids, it'd be nice.
And we are, uh, working on some things coming in January that I think will help and assist in doing exactly that.
Excellent.
Anybody else? And I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you. Four H.
Resolution number twenty-three dash one ninety-one, a resolution approving change order number two for the American Rescue Plan Act project entitled Weston Park Expansion, and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
I need a motion.
Motion.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Dee Dee Johnson Reed, and a second by Councilman Martin Lewis, and we have, uh, David here to tell us about it.
Uh, so the contractor for the West End Park Expansion project was, um, getting ready to do their final electrical connections, and when they opened the panel up, they noticed that the, one of the large gauge feeder wires was, uh, cut, or at least attempted to be cut.
The same people that stole our air conditioning copper tried to steal our wire.
And when they realized that it was aluminum, they stopped and didn't proceed further. Anyways, the point is that it's damaged and it has to be repaired in order for them to complete the electrical installation work. So they have, um, eight hundred and thirty-three dollars to do that repair work to the electrical panel.
So why do they need forty-five extra days?
Um, that has to do with some of the material to get the components to make the repair, because it's kind of a special repair required.
You, you don't wanna pull the wire again, it's a very big feeder wire and it's very long, and you're not gonna be able to splice it. They can fix it, but if you had to just replace the wire, it would be thousands and thousands of dollars, so we waiting for the splice kit or whatever it is.
Right, I just noticed that they wanted forty-five extra days, and I was just trying to figure out why.
Yeah.
Plus, they've probably been impacted, they've probably been impacted ten or fifteen days since this happened, you know?
Well, right, right.
Okay. Did we catch the person who did the damage?
No, unfortunately we didn't.
Do we, we have cameras on that?
I don't think we did. And I was, I was just hoping the power was on, but that's another.
Next time.
Yeah, yeah, next time the power will be on.
Oh, so the power wasn't on?
I don't know if it was on or off, but I gotta stop.
So the cameras didn't pick it?
No, we did not identify anyone from the cameras. And if you know that we've moved some other upper money that was kind of an overrun in the park, we are looking at, uh, I, I have found forty thousand dollars that, uh, we are gonna upgrade further and finish the, we have some other security upgrades we're gonna do. Uh, we're gonna fence the units off so this can't happen again, uh, but we are making strides, and we all know that, that all we did so far was a very small phase one. We have more work, you don't buy a school, an entire school and all the property for eighty-something thousand dollars and expect it to be, you know, uh, all ready to go. So we knew it was a challenging project from the beginning, more things will be coming, but, uh, you know, we bit it off, we're gonna chew it, so. It, uh, you can plan on, you know, more budget amendments, more, any grant opportunities we find, any extra overrun of money that we could apply to it, you know, I, I wanna get it up and running as quickly as possible.
So, do we have any neighbors in that area that had cameras that may have picked it up?
We had some cameras at the park, but that didn't pick them up either, and we really don't have, I mean, the PD did what they always do, is canvassing the neighborhood and looking, and we didn't get any. I think there was one other camera, but it, it wasn't clear, you couldn't, you couldn't see anything.
So, I'd just like to make an appeal to the public. If you all see.
Help us with that school.
People vandalizing the school, please call the police, because all that means is that we have to spend taxpayer dollars to fix the problem. That's not how we wanna spend your money.
And it means that our senior citizen center, which is the first one in the West End, isn't open.
Right.
It means that we, we're trying to finish building, we'll have finished the shell of the computer lab, and then now the next thing, we know we gotta hustle the computers. But those are just things that, you know, the community is just set back further from having, and, you know, the sad thing is, when I went to look at the school, there wasn't a broken window. There wasn't any damage at all, okay? Since that time, it's like right after we signed the papers, it has just broken loose that it's, the vandalism has been ridiculous. You know, nothing good. The way I look at it, nothing good comes easy, but man, I could use a little less challenges, so I agree, we need some help.
But, and I will tell you, I mean, if you think about this, if we put a computer lab in there for the community's use, and they keep vandalizing, they're gonna steal those computers, and then you're not gonna have that resource available to you, so please help us, help you by telling on these people, call if you see some, see something, say something.
Yep.
If you have a camera pointed toward the school. You can get some trail cameras.
Uh, well, that's debatable.
It's been done.
Careful what you say.
Well, we're about to get some other cameras.
About to get some real cameras, so, yeah.
So we're gonna be pointing them over there as well.
Definitely, definitely.
Well, well, this is in my district, so I wanna address my people, y'all need to stop, that's shame on y'all, y'all sad, y'all wrong. People trying to fix up your community, our community, for our grandparents, for our kids, and you stealing to go get high or whatever you do with it. You're wrong, you need to stop, shame on you, there's one camera that catch everything, it sit high and it look low, and I hope it spotted you.
Amen.
Amen to that one.
Thank you, sir. Anything else? Then please vote your machines. Thank you. Four I.
Resolution number twenty-three dash one ninety-two, a resolution approving change order number one for the American Rescue Plan Act project entitled Upgrades to Steamboat Pavilion, and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
I need a motion.
So move.
Second.
Member Term Ricky Gosselin, Councilwoman Brooke Marcott, David, tell us a story.
Okay, so last week, it was pretty much boots on the ground, foundation works started, we had to do some drill shafts. They got ninety percent of them in, uh, the last four that they were gonna do. They ended up hitting some concrete about a foot below the grass, um, and grade, and what we ended up investigating was that was an old foundation, as you can see from the photos, uh, to the left of the guy in the corner of that existing wall, that's the concrete that was under the, uh, grass and the grade. And that's the old foundation wall that actually continues around and connects to the other wall on the other side. So all that concrete has to be removed, um, in order for them to finish, to complete that installation work of the foundation and then, of course, the drill shafts, and so this is the expense, this is the equipment cost, uh, their rental and their labor in order to remove that concrete. Now, the thing that's kinda challenging, uh, can you go to the next, the PDF? Okay, so the vertical red line, there's also a sewer line that runs right next to it.
Ooh.
So they have to be really precise on how they remove this concrete, so they're gonna chip it away instead of just like kinda taking it out with the excavator, uh, heavily. So they will, uh, they did have some savings that they weren't gonna haul the concrete off, we could actually just use that as rubble, and we're gonna put it kinda where the concrete, uh, parking is still there, it's just part of the backfill process, so we're gonna save that material actually on the job. So that's about four thousand dollar savings just doing that, instead of hauling it off. But it is, you know, surgical at this point, and they don't wanna damage anything, but we're gonna make the sewer department aware that this is happening, so like, in case something does happen. So this is the expense to cover the central scene.
Yep.
Footing. It's about a hundred feet, when you're feet of it, and it's approximately.
About ten thousand dollars? About ten thousand, right?
What's that?
It's about ten thousand dollars?
Yeah, it's close to ten thousand, but I was saying the size of it, it's about two or three feet deep, about, about the same width.
Okay.
So, and it's got some heavy rebar in it too, so it makes it a little more challenging.
Yep.
We need to get this done so we can keep moving forward.
Any questions or comments?
So, David, if, if, if this so happens and the damage to sewer line, it's not their expense, correct?
If the sewer lines are marked, that's what they do, the LA one call process.
I understand, but I mean, they, they made us aware it's there though.
Yeah, but if they break it.
What comes asking?
Yeah, I mean, typically, it's, if it's marked and it's broken, then it's their responsibility.
Right.
If it's not marked, then it's on whoever's utility company.
Correct, correct, alright.
So, uh, just a quick question, David, if it, if something happens and the sewer is broken, I mean, who's gonna be affected? Is it the businesses in that area? What, what could potentially be the, uh, consequences of this?
I'm not sure of the exact mapping on what that service is, um, I know that it does go to a lift station.
Yeah.
Um, I'm not sure if it connects all the way back to kinda where the sewer Airbnbs are. But we're gonna engage with the, the sewer department, um, with Craig Gerard, and just make sure everything is okay.
Okay.
So they're, they're on alert.
Okay.
And I know that Craig's only been here a couple of months, but we've already had two sewer lines be, that were hit, so he's already had the dress rehearsal. He's already had to shut down some pump stations and reroute and do some things, and so, uh, but yeah, we're gonna have a little meeting with him before they get going, just to make sure that if he has to isolate something, you know, he knows, he knows when and where.
Okay. Do we, um, do we share any of this information with customers in that area? Like, let them know that that work is going on, or?
We kinda hope for the best and wait and see that it doesn't happen, the minute it happens, yes, our people go out, knock doors, do what they have to do, shut it off first.
Right.
And then go around and let people know who's affected, but, you know, we have so many of these, and I'm not being ugly with all the road work, with the drainage work, with all the projects that y'all have helped approve, we have these risks probably more than the city's had in a while, because you look, we've got construction all over the place, so
Right.
there are many times that we have these risks and just, you know, knock on something, most of the time, it, it works out.
Okay. It's just, it's our downtown area and businesses and stuff like that, so I was just wondering.
Yes ma'am.
Who would be affected if there was a problem?
Other questions, comments?
It's gonna be nice when it's done.
Yes ma'am, yes ma'am.
Very nice.
Anybody else? Then I ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you. Thank you, David. Four J.
Resolution number twenty-three dash one ninety-three, a resolution approving a professional services contract with architect Paul Alain for the Bank Street Aquatic Center project, and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
I need a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Dee Dee Johnson Reed, second by Councilman David Bruceord, and the tag team, team has switched. Paul, tell us about it.
Uh, this project, um, is part of the master plan that y'all had done several years ago.
Yep.
Uh, to try to figure out where to put a, a public swimming pool. As you're aware of, the pool in West End is no longer in existence, the pool at City Park is no longer in existence, and so this is an opportunity to create an aquatic center that could be used competitively. So this pool will have six lanes, and it'll be twenty-five yards in length. Um, the location of the pool is actually where the old Dog Pound property is, kinda interconnects with the backside of Bank Street. Now, the thoughts I think that we're having presently is to try to, try to improve the Boulevard entrance coming off of Admiral Doyle, and maybe widen that road, and put some signees there, so it's, it's kind of a, a nice entrance point into the property. There's an existing building that we're gonna try to utilize on site. So the, the funds come from the capital outlay, as was described earlier, it's an act three, uh, ninety-seven funding mechanism. It's got a tight time schedule for
I know.
development of the drawings, and we're glad it's here tonight, because we're kinda worried, the longer it gets, we still have a lot of work to do. We have to, um, as a survey, we've got a price for that to be done, sole boarding to be done immediately. After the contract signed, we'll authorize that to be done. And we're considering the moment of, of pool consultant at some level, there's some entities in Lafayette that can
Yep.
lend some assistance as other entities available, so we'll probably be engaged in those as well. So the goal is to get a shovel ready, set of plans ready for bidding, that's the purpose of this funding, and that's the goal for what we're gonna achieve, with the input of the mayor and the council, of course.
And we've already talked to all of these high schools, because this is exciting, so the high schools would utilize it not only for practice, but for swim meets. So one of the design criteria is one of the first meetings we're gonna have, I've talked to some pool subcontractors or contractors, and we're gonna kinda get with them and get some opinions and talk to them, because the couple that I've been talking to and give, have given them the contacts, have built some, you know, big municipal pools. Uh, number two, we're gonna do a meeting with the schools or with, you know, the swim team, uh, people, coaches, principals, whatever, immediately, because we wanna make sure that the design incorporates that, I don't wanna build it and then some reason they can't hold a swim meet. I think that that's an important part, because they're driving out of town to practice, there, there is no place to host a tournament now. So I think that, that, that's gonna be critical, because we want our kids in town to learn how to swim, which we have not had for a very long time. We tried to find a central location, it's not far from hotels and restaurants, so that if we do swim meets, it actually could become something good. In addition to that, you know, it's just, uh, uh, an amenity that most cities have that we have not had for a while. Anyway, any questions or comments? Yes ma'am.
So, um, when I was looking through the contract, it, you know, you had a couple contractors that you're gonna be working with listed here, so is that money that we're allocating gonna cover those contractors, or is this just your fee?
Uh, if I say consultant, like an engineer, then it will be part of our fee.
Yeah, they're, they're in that, in that money.
Okay.
Whether it's a pool consultant or an engineer, um, I mean, they're gonna be different entities.
I think someone, I, I read, so, I think survey people and stuff like that.
That's part of our contract.
Yeah, we have to do a survey, we have to do a sole bore.
Yeah, the way the contract is set up is that, uh, we'll engage those subcontractors, whether it's a survey or sole boring, and then we'll present an invoice and be just reimbursed, and that way it goes towards the, the fulfillment of the obligation of the contract.
Yeah.
Our contract.
Yeah, and then if you use an electric consultant or you use something like that, that's in the fee.
Right, correct, yes.
Okay, um, and so, uh, one of the things that I also read in there was, um, that you're, you know, like, I guess some of the things that you would deliver, one is that you will visit the site one time during construction, do we have a project manager other than?
Oh, no, they, we, we visit the sites weekly, and I mean, you know, once a month, once a month, we have a meeting.
It said, he had one site visit during construction, so I was just trying to figure out who would be our project manager.
I see.
So this part of the contract.
You wanna know who the project manager is? He's sitting down right now, it's David Alain. I mean, I see David on the site probably once a week, we talk constantly, we have a formal meeting on every project, a certain day of the month, every month, every month. But we probably talk four or five times a week, and anytime there's an issue, anytime there's something, the contractor picks up, I mean, it's the way it works, contractor picks up the phone, calls your architect, we got a conflict, we have whatever, he picks up the phone and calls me, and, you know.
No, I get it, I'm, you know, whatever's written down is what I gotta go by, so it's in the contracts as one.
That's how it functions. And you know, we've had a lot of practice. We've been doing a lot of projects, so we got a lot of practice, it, it works.
No, we, we offer full services, and the full services will be part of the construction administration, and in order, as Freddie's indicating, you know, these projects demand a lot of attention, and we'll be there.
Okay, alright, just checking.
Now, um.
Yes ma'am.
Anticipations for the, the aquatic center, how deep is the pool gonna be?
He was reading my mind.
Seven and a half feet on the deep end and about four feet on the shallow end. My standard for, uh, competition swimming, so it's going mostly a four-foot depth, you don't go lower than that, because you gotta do a turnaround, and then, uh, seven and a half on the, on the deep end.
So, so we couldn't offer like diving competitions, though, that's too shallow.
I would think for diving off of a swim platform is what you're looking for, not, not a high board diving. I think it's gonna be a competition-type pool.
Yeah, they, they dive off swim blocks, but it's not like high diving, you, we would have to be almost twelve, thirteen feet deep.
Okay, well, I mean, I'm just asking, because I know. Okay, well, I mean, I'm just asking, cause I know when I learned how to swim, when I was a lifeguard at Weston, it was 11 feet deep on the, on the deep end.
Yeah.
So seven and a half just doesn't seem that deep.
City Park was 10, I think?
Nine.
It was, it wasn't as deep as Weston, Weston was clean.
Clean them both, so it's been a long time.
That's why I was asking, bro.
It was nine, it was nine feet over here, and they had a higher board.
Yeah.
Right.
Used to hit both of them.
Cause we, yeah, we used to always ask why we couldn't get a higher board, cause we wanted, we had the deeper pool.
Yeah, and I guess the criteria would need to be established as to what's the purpose of the pool. If the purpose of the pool is for, for swim training, that's different than high diving.
No, agree, I, I'm just trying to figure out if we, are we limiting what we could do there? Because, I mean, I know there're gonna be swim meets and stuff, but I mean, I'm a swimmer, so I wanna be able to go and swim whenever I feel like it too. Just like other kids when we wanna do swimming lessons, but that means that we couldn't train anybody for, you know, the high diving, cause it's just gonna be too shallow. Just a thought, I'm not saying that we have to do it, I'm just asking.
Shallow and. And I think, I think the pool's faster if it doesn't have a real deep end and doesn't have a real shallow end. I mean, you know, if it's built for competition, you want pretty much a uniform depth, or more uniform depth. Cause, I mean, a, a, a pool for meets is really different than a pool for diving.
But I, I.
I don't think you can have them both.
Agree, but I guess I'm trying to understand, cause I don't, I didn't think we were just building a pool for competition. We were also building a pool.
Well, it's not, it's for swimming lessons, it's for us to use generally, but I think that the economic benefit of doing both is, is, is kinda, you know, it's kinda like, we're spending a lot of money at the perplex, and we're hoping to get some back, but we want our regular kids that aren't playing travel ball and stuff to utilize it, was the same thing here. I think that we putting it in a location that we give our kids in high school and middle school some real opportunity they don't have. At the same time, I want to be, all the kids to be able to go. So I think we're trying to meet in the middle and say, we're gonna do something that could have some economic advantage. That's not why we're doing it, but it could have some. And I know that pool cost to maintain a pool is, is, you know, over the years, it's not cheap. So I was hoping it had enough economic gain to help with the upkeep and the maintenance, and then was attractive for swim meets and helped our high school kids. But then I really want, you know, it's got to wear a lot of hats, I really want that in the summer, our, our, our kids have a, you know, a place to go swim for just recreation.
Right.
So we're kinda trying to meet in the middle and accomplish, you know, a lot with one pool.
Well, we should also open it up to gyms.
I thought of that too, cause they, you know.
Yeah, I mean, when I work, and businesses, cause when I worked for Chick-fil-A, they used to bus us over to a pool.
Oh, we'll rent it, oh, yeah, we'll definitely rent it. But it is kind of a, you, you don't lose a game, when you meet in the middle, you can't have everything. You know, what we're trying to do is compromise where it can serve the most people. I always say, it's not the right word, but I'm always saying body count, this isn't Vietnam, but I'm always trying to say, how can I get the most people to use everything that we build? Whatever we put out there, I want, I wanna be able to count and say, wow, you know, we reached 2,000 people this summer, or whatever. So it makes you kinda meet in the middle and it's, it's.
That's fine, I just know that when I was lifeguard, we, we always wanted that high diving board, we would dive from the lifeguard chair, cause that was our only high diving board.
Right, right, yes sir.
You still had the floor, Ms. Laidbetter?
Yes, I did.
Yes, I think she did, yes ma'am, sorry.
I just wanted to finish out and, and ask, it's not gonna be enclosed, it's gonna be outside?
Yes, we, we can't afford to make closure. We did kinda look at that option early on, but it, it's, it's a pipe dream. It's just so expensive.
Well, you never.
We have a lot of property, so maybe later.
Will it be heated?
That's one thing that we're looking into.
We trying to look into that, cause we do realize that practice swimming and all, you know, if we could use it year round, hey, my numbers would really go up. So that's maybe an option, we kinda looking into it.
Okay, could use it for scuba diving too.
I think we'll present the cost of heating a pool to y'all to determine if you wanna heat it or not. There's gonna be that cost ratio versus usage and the number of months, so a decision will have to be made based on that.
Well, it's also why I was trying to get tournaments there, because I thought maybe that could pay for the heat. Yes, sir.
I just wanted to piggyback on Ms. Laidbetter's question about, you, you're trying to, I think we may have been thinking about the same thing, that the usage is gonna be uniform across the board, not, not so extravagant and not so unsafe, you know, two, three feet of water, whatever. That's what you were thinking, I was wondering the same, when I think, when I thought about meets, the first thing I thought about was college campus pools, Olympic sized pools, 12 feet all the way across, or eight feet all the way across. And I was like, whoa, that's gonna be scary, that's why I'm glad you asked that, that question.
And that's kinda why I tried to explain it that we're meeting in the middle, we're doing something that will appeal a little bit to everybody.
Yeah, I like, I like that idea, but I'm gonna tell you, on the diving boards, they took those diving boards out before the pools closed. Those were the first things gone.
And our insurance company.
I wasn't here, so I don't know.
And our insurance company.
I'm just telling you about what happened when I was lifeguard at Weston Pool.
I've already.
We dove from the lifeguard chair, cause we didn't have a high diving board.
Yeah, but you know, they didn't want, they stopped them diving boards, they took them out before the pools closed.
Yep.
Yeah, they put in slides.
I remember that.
Yep, oh no, and I've already told the insurance company, you know, you got a plan on what you're doing, and I've already kinda talked to the insurance company, and you know, they're gonna cover it, but they're not excited. I mean, you know, pools are, come with liability.
Right.
Comes with liability if you don't teach your kids how to swim too, so, you know, anyway, but we have to pay the bill.
Right.
Anybody else? Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Good discussion, thank you. Thank you all very much.
Happy holidays.
Uh huh. Alright, 5A.
Introduction of ordinance number 2023-32, an ordinance amending section 2-26 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of New Iberia in order to amend the rules of procedure of the Board of Trustees related to the American with Disabilities Act and setting for public hearing on December 19th, 2023.
I need a motion.
So move.
Motion by Mayor Lieutenant Ricky Gonsalat and a second, Councilman Marlon Lewis. And this, ladies and gentlemen, is something that has been pushed on us, if you will. And I'm not saying it's not a good thing, but it comes with a lot of different requirements. This is to get our meetings and our meeting participation up to this American, the American Disabilities Act. Comes with some things we didn't expect, okay, so we've been trying to work through it, it will be a process. We have to have something in place for our auditors next year, so we are beginning, and Laney has spent a lot of time and worked really hard on this to try to figure out how it can work.
Well, I was kinda excited to see it.
It's, yeah, I think in the end it's gonna be a good thing, but the mechanics of it have been a little weird to try to think of everything and figure out how our meetings function and aren't disrupted while you're still being inclusive of everybody. And we had to kinda think through a lot of stuff, because some of the early thoughts, our meetings would be completely, you know, you couldn't control them, it would really get kinda, a lot of distractions of, of outside people trying to communicate and, you know. I think we have a plan now, but it, it just, all I'm saying is well worth it, but it took a lot of work to get to this. And then once we put this in place, we probably gonna have to make some adjustments as we go.
Right, but I like the fact that as a council, cause you might remember, early on during COVID, I used to ask you, why can't we let them participate from home?
Right, right.
So to me, this is a good thing, cause you'll even have to.
And I might, I'll be close, Laney might have to correct me, cause we had a lot of versions, you know, but if a council person has disabilities, they have to have a medical disability and prove they have a disability, and then there are some concessions that can be made for them, you know, whoever that person is. And then the big thing was for the public to be able to come in and communicate, but not disrupt us doing our work. You can't have this open, just like we are very, I'll say it, we're very controlled, you do your public note, comment at the beginning, there's no back and forth, we just listen, thinking of that same thing. We are gonna have a discussion at some point about time limit, and maybe time limit on our visitors here, as well as we'll need a time limit on, for public comment there. And it's just gonna be to figure out the mechanics of it, and you can't have somebody going live and, you know, blasting you, right, that you're not even, they're not even finishing, I mean, it could get out of hand. So we do have to, and, and I can't prove, if it's a council person, you're gonna have a doctor's excuse that says you can have it, but I'm not positive how, how the access is granted to other people. And you can think of, if you sit there and think about it for a while, you can think of, one, it's a good thing. And the flip side, you can think of all kinda ways that it could be abused and that, you know, our meetings could turn into a circus. So we have to control that, that element from the outside. It's kinda like when the internet first came and the Daily Iberian had the forum, and it had no rules, no nothing. I mean, it was completely ridiculous, it was nuts, the things that people, somebody would come in the next morning and try to get everything off of that, it was crazy. So you can't have this live screen that people start putting stuff that they should, and then unfortunately, somebody would. Kind of a close section. Okay, so we'll work through it, but I need to get something in place, we need to have something to put so that the auditors see, cause I don't think, I'm not sure that everybody's taking this serious, we are, you know, so that we can have that and, and, and meet the requirement.
This is a moving target.
Yes, sir.
I don't know if this would help, but I know in Houston, like some of the court cases are that way, they're videoed. So you don't have to physically go into court, you can actually go on video. So I don't know, you might wanna look into that and see how they do it, that might help, it may not.
Video from, from your home?
Yep.
Okay.
Or either from your lawyer's office.
Okay.
Yeah.
Or from your jail.
Or from your cell. Or from your cell, that's what I would say.
That's right. You can do it here from your cell. You're already ahead of the game.
That would be funny.
Yep. Anybody else?
So we basically trying to get closed captioning for people who can't make the meetings that got disabilities?
It's, it's, and it's that they have public input.
Right, they, they can act and participate.
That they can participate, that they have public input.
If their ADA approved and they're at home, they can't make a meeting for whatever reason, then we have to allow them to be able to make public comments via video.
Well, no, not via video.
Oh, just.
We don't really want that, cause you don't know, I mean, like I said.
But where are they gonna make them at? On?
It'll be audio.
It's gonna be audio, okay.
And then.
But it's gonna be just like if they were here and they did the public comment thing and they.
Yes, it has to be, and there's a, a time limit, you know, I mean, it has to be controlled, because if not, you're gonna be in the middle of conducting your meeting and, you know.
Right.
Right.
Richard Phillips is gonna come on the screen, you know, or whoever, you know, I mean, he's not here tonight.
Yeah, but he'll be listening tomorrow.
Yeah, yeah, no. But I mean, you know, we have to have a procedure. No, he called me today, I gotta call him in the morning, he called me today about something, that's why I thought about it.
Already talked to him.
Oh, you did, okay, okay.
Don't forget about Benjamin Myers.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, we have, you know.
But we like to pick on Richard.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Oh, Jesus.
So, anyway.
I think we also have to have them have the ability to, like, I don't know, make a comment during, when we ask for comments at those points.
Yeah, like in our, in our meeting with public comment, they would have a time to type something in or, you know, audio.
Well, I mean, if they can't type.
It'd be audio, it'd be audio.
But how, I mean, we, we're gonna have to know, yeah, it's gonna be weird, yeah, they'll have a.
Yeah.
Okay, cool.
And again, you know, if somebody gets on there and, you know, because our meetings are on TV, they're on the radio, we also have to watch that, you know, some nut doesn't get on there, I mean, what the problem is, somebody could get on there and, you know, just really say something they shouldn't.
And that's a problem.
It is a problem.
It's happening.
I know that, I see that in, you know, I mean, technology's good, but it can be abused.
And I think, does this request have to be made every meeting? Or can you make a standing request?
I'll ask.
I don't know that.
If, if, yeah, it's good to have it every meeting, otherwise you're gonna have people who get on the list and never get off.
Right.
And it's gonna get really un.
Yeah, I think it should be, yeah, cause you'd have somebody just say, I'm, I'm, I wanna be on every meeting.
For all time.
No, you need to be a standing request.
For eternity, you know. We need, we need term limits for comments.
You kinda almost wish they would, they would be on camera, because if they are hiding just, you know, with audio, it's like, I can say whatever, no one's gonna know who it is. But if you put them on video and we all see that face, it's like.
Well, they have to sign up, though.
Yes, they have to sign up, we'll know who it is, they have to sign up.
But I mean, I'm, I guess for me, I'm better with faces, I won't remember the name, but I'll remember the face. Interesting.
Yep, the whole thing is pretty interesting.
Maybe they submit a picture.
I think it's great, but, you know, me, I like technology, so I love it, but.
Any other questions or comments? Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you. 5B.
Introduction of special ordinance number 2023-2024-10, an ordinance amending the budget to recognize New Orleans Jazz and Heritage Grant and setting for public hearing on December 19th, 2023.
I need a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Marlon Lewis and a second by Councilwoman Dee Dee Johnson Reed. Any discussion on this item?
So who's this money going to? I mean, it's just that, it's a little money, but.
Uh, Bunk Johnson.
Okay, I thought so, but it didn't say Bunk Johnson, it just said jazz.
And it's going to the Bunk Johnson Brass Band or to the Bunk Johnson?
Festival. Festival. I'm pretty sure it's going to the festival.
To the festival?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Yep. No, good thing, great ambassadors, I mean, I've been involved in the Bunk Johnson Festival since the first year, and it's never evolved as big as I'd like it, like we thought by now would be the Jazz and Heritage Festival, but it's just great to have, you know, that history and to have them here and what, I mean, great ambassadors. So I, I wish this was more money. Anybody else? Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you. 5C.
Introduction of special ordinance number 2023-2024-11, an ordinance amending the budget to reflect remaining budget on the City Park and Weston Park Community Center Improvements Project, FPNC number 50-MO1-20-02, and setting for public hearing on December 19th, 2023.
I need a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Marlon Lewis and a second by Councilwoman Dee Dee Johnson Reed. Any questions or comments?
I'm not gonna ask it, but.
Well, hearing and seeing, no questions, anybody else?
Laney's doing like Spready.
Please, vote your machines.
She looked right at me.
Thank you very much.
I like your questions.
Well, thank you, Marlon.
Look, this is our time, this is, this is game day, what I say that all the time, this is game day, this is what, this is what we're here to do, you know? Twice a month, it's, it's fun.
You're making me feel like I asked too many questions. I'm joking, you know I don't care.
That ain't gonna stop you, uh, excuse me, uh, item 5D.
Introduction of special ordinance number 2023-2024-12, an ordinance amending the budget to reflect PCL franchise agreement and setting for public hearing on December 19th, 2023.
I need a motion.
So move.
Motion by Mayor Lieutenant Ricky Gonsalat and a second by Councilman Dustin Swier. Questions or comments?
This means we received the check.
This means we received the check, this means the check has been deposited, this means I checked on it and the check was good.
You sure?
Not that I didn't think it wouldn't be, but yeah, we, we, yes ma'am. We are, we are.
So that means cameras should, we should be looking, we should be getting something about cameras soon.
Yes, yes, we, we have, you know.
Discussion.
By the next meeting, we'll adopt this. We are still talking to the companies, still getting bids, still refining what we're doing. But yes, I mean, we're moving on it, I'm not waiting for the second vote to say, okay, I have the money, so yes, we are moving on it. Police officers are analyzing, I've seen some preliminaries, and looking at, cause it's about 125 cameras and about 25 LPRs, so they're pinpointing all of that, looking, the chief and I are reserving the last 20, 25 cameras so that we can make sure we cover all our parks, we can make sure we cover our downtown because of all the fairs and festivals, and so, you know, probably, it, it's getting all broken down per data of crime stats and those kinda things. And then the LPRs, we have people out and about who, from our department, but who kinda specialize in the coming and going and what's the path of travel and those kinda things, so that we can make sure that those LPRs pick up the most license plates and you won't be able to get in, out of town without us being able to identify you. And so they're working on all of that, but yeah, so that behind the scenes work is going on while we're getting bids. We've gotten some bids already, we refining them, we've been going back and forth. But that way, in another two weeks when this is finalized, then, then we can move quickly and then get some bids to y'all to approve.
So you don't need input from us as far as areas that we think need to be covered in our districts?
You can, but I think the police from the beginning have had a good handle on that, and, you know, they have all the crime stats and are looking at it. I still wouldn't mind, you know, send them to me, because like I wanna make sure that all our parks are covered, I wanna make sure that, you know, where we host events are covered. When you think of like the Masonic on Anne, look at how many events occurred there, okay? When you think of downtown, all the, you know, I, I hate to say it, but there are a few bars and maybe one in particular that we have more problems than others, we gotta make sure we have some cameras there. If you think of Bully Plaza where all the fairs and festivals happen, if you think of all of our various parks, you know, the, I wanna make sure all the parks are covered, but think of Veterans Memorial, Shuikane Festival Building, the two gyms. You know, look at all the events and the people that rent the MLK Center, you know, so we wanna make sure that they have good sightlines from parking lots to into buildings. So we're really trying to be comprehensive and think of, one, the major hotspots, and never forget, we can move a camera. So we're gonna set them up, and then if, if another area would heat up, we're also gonna have a mobile unit that can go from place to place, or if we would be having shoplifting problems, or, I don't know, some crowd control. uh, that can go from place to place or if we would be having shoplifting problems or, uh, I don't know, some crowd control issues or you know, some building people are hanging out, we could go pull it and put it right in the middle of the parking lot, you know, so that's gonna, it's gonna have some flexibility. Um, I'm not saying it's easy to move a camera, but if, if, what a good problem to have is some hotspot settled down and we didn't need a camera there, we can move it to something else.
So the reason why I'm asking the question is because I know that there are certain communities where people are looking forward to having c- cameras in their neighborhoods because of crime, kids, you know, people walking down the street with big old guns and scaring them or shooting and, you know, maybe the cops aren't called or something, it's just, there are some areas where people were are hoping that we're gonna put cameras in the community so that they can feel safer in their community.
Right.
So I, I just don't want us to skip out on some of those areas where people feel unsafe.
I understand, and the reason that the police department is doing it is because it's stat-driven. So, you know, in other words, we, do I think we'll run out of cameras before everybody, I'm not being ugly, I mean, I love my town, but before every neighborhood says, well, I wish I had a camera? Yeah, we have 125 cameras, we have, you know, hundreds of neighborhoods. So I think that the hotspots have to go first where the violent crimes and the major crimes are happening. And then if we hit all the parks and we hit all of the main avenues with the LPR cameras, um, I'm even looking at, okay, those school cameras have regular cameras on them too, so I don't need to maybe waste a cam, I don't mean to be ugly, but I don't need to waste a camera where we just put up two cameras for, you know, the school enforcement because it's a camera and they're also LPRs.
Right.
So I can move along and put it somewhere else. Um, so if we, the fair way to do it is to, is to, as, look at the town globally and then map out all the crime and then see how many cameras we have left to, to put, you know, and, and this is a system that we can add on to. Uh, because I kind of feel that we'll spend the big dollars, we'll get it going, we sent someone for training already, we realize we're gonna end up hiring more people. We already are with separate money, with $200,000 that y'all graced us with a while back, starting to set up the video wall that would've come out of this money. So that bought 20 more cameras. You know, by staging things and, you know, I'm pretty good at, at a plan A and a plan B and stacking money, by doing that in the last budget, then that let us buy 20 more cameras.
Okay.
So we will continue to do that when the PD has money left at the end of the year, if they can continue on that trend. Well, then, you know, there's nothing with us stopping us from saying, let's add 20 more cameras. That way it can continue to kind of evolve, but I don't think in phase one, I, I'll catch everywhere.
No, but I, I guess I'm just concerned because like, I mean, I hear gunshots in, like, from my bedroom window coming from, like, Cherokee Anne Street area almost every weekend. You know, so my, and I talk to people down there, they're, they're, they're telling me things like, I can't wait till you guys put up these cameras.
But I feel, I feel like that's where the cameras are going in the beginning. I feel already that, you know, I mean, I can't promise that, but I feel, oh, and they also, the cameras are gonna have some gunshot locators that, I don't know how, how, when we first, I mentioned that years ago when we were building the PD and I was told they weren't effective. But now I think they've refined some of that technology, we won't have them everywhere, but I think we'll actually have a few that it helps you pinpoint, you know, where the shots are coming from. Uh, but I'm pretty sure that, it's a kind of a blank statement, but I'm pretty sure where we're hearing the gunshots is where we're having other issues.
Okay.
So the cameras will probably be in those locations for the most part.
And that's probably true, it's just, a lot of times I don't hear the cops coming, like, I don't hear that people, I think it's, it happens so often that people don't always make that phone call. And so I just want to make sure that those, those people are gonna be able to feel safe, they get to the point where, you know how you just hear it all the time?
Right, right.
I mean, I don't even call the cops.
Yeah, but my cops hear it all the time and they go and they picking up showcases. In other words, you don't make a major, and I'm, I'm sorry that it happens more than I would like it to happen, more than any one of us would. But they don't put, they, they go to the scene, they, uh, they pick up the showcases, they investigate, they ask people. Um, because it does happen pretty often, but I don't think, you know, in other words, they hear them too.
Okay, I just, again, the people in that community want to feel safe. That's all, we just want, I just want to make sure that they know that we're not gonna skip.
I want the whole town to, as we all do, we all represent some part of this wonderful place. We all want everybody to feel safe and so we'll just keep working on it, if we gotta keep adding cameras, we'll keep adding cameras.
Okay.
Yes?
I, I think, and hearing this discussion, but I think it's, it's critical and it's important for us as leaders to make sure we disseminate the right information in that we're all gonna get calls and concerns, some people, hey, put a camera on my corner, put a, but we need to make sure that they understand that it's stat-driven and we're going after what the police requests that are the areas that we need. You know, we can't go out and put cameras on every corner because that's unfeaso, unrealistic, unfeasible, but if we make the message that we're putting them in areas where we think they're needed driven by the police and the stats, I think it's gonna make them feel more safe as well, even if they don't get a camera on their corner. So I think that, that's the message we have to have, because if we, if we go out and start saying, hey, I'm gonna go talk to the mayor, maybe we can put a camera, that's gonna create a lot of problems.
I mean, I would never do that because I don't know where they're going.
I know, but maybe you will, you know, it's gonna create a lot of problems, I think, so I really think that they're gonna feel safe no matter where we put them.
And we're also gonna have a contingency of people who are gonna be mad that we put some cameras.
Oh, I'm sure.
I mean, we had that when we put the poles up and some other cameras, we had people calling, I had people calling me and tracking me down saying, I don't want a camera.
Yeah, I mean, I've had people call me complaining about that and ask me to ask you to move the cameras.
Yeah, yeah.
And I'm like, not moving it.
So, so you can expect, you know, with, with, both sides, okay? We know we're doing it for the greater good and it's the right thing to do, but yeah, you can expect, I can expect and you can too, both sides. Anybody else?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Ladies first.
Councilwoman Leta, ladies first.
Out of this money, since it comes from Cleco, uh, can we, um, reserve some of that money just because I can guarantee you pretty much within the next couple of years, they're gonna ask for a rate increase. And we need to have the ammunition to really try to fight that.
Well, we'll make that decision when it comes, but I think I don't have enough money, although we got it up to, I mean, we've talked about the figure before, it's $1,750,000. We're gonna spend, because remember, we have $300,000 for streetlights. So of this money.
Which I think they should pay for, but you know, that's, you know, that's on you.
That one's water under the bridge. I mean, you're welcome to talk about anything you want to, but that was the thing I failed to mention, so I'm glad we're having this conversation. So I think we need the money for the cameras and then we're reserving 300,000 and that will buy us our streetlights. And the police department will have, as we've talked about, will have some areas that they will dictate where a streetlight goes to make sure that the cameras can see. I can't have a camera that doesn't function because there's not enough light. And unfortunately, we both know and we all know in our town.
Remember, that was, that was my big thing.
Yes, ma'am, and, and that's good. So with the money that's left, let's just say arbitrary figure that PD needs 30 lights, okay? And then our cameras will function, okay? The money that's left from the 300 will be divided equally per district and each council person will be able to help select where we're putting those lights. So I think that if we go in, in the direction that rates go up and we, you know, the council that's here at the time, there's a majority that says we want to take a stand, I'll have to find the money. But I feel that.
I get, I'm just saying.
That we have to.
Because I know, you know it's gonna happen.
That's what we've been saying and I think that's the message we're sending.
Yeah. Okay.
So I'm just saying that, you know, we're getting this money and we're doing some good things with it.
We are.
Okay? But in the end, they gonna get this money back.
Well.
10 fold, one way or the other. So rates are gonna, the only reason why I think they haven't done it yet was because we hadn't signed the contract. Because they were supposed to do it in, maybe in, in June. It was due for June, but because we didn't sign the contract, they didn't go up. So now we have for 27 years. And, um, I think within, maybe this year is coming. So as strongly as some of us fought to, to get this done, we need to fight strongly for the people that we represent who's actually gonna have to pay this money back, including us.
I'm gonna say, including us.
So I'm just saying, you know, uh, we need to be on that side of it too, because, uh, it won't be too much money. Remember we said, oh, $200,000 was too much to, to, you know, to fight it or get a consultant, get a lawyer and try to fight this thing. But this is for the betterment of, you know, our constituents because they can't afford to pay higher rates. And that we need to look at. Is it worth the, the 1.75 for higher rates? I think we need to definitely show them that they're worth fighting for.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Well, I was gonna ta, I was gonna talk about the, the cameras, I voted, I voted for the cameras, but, uh, man, you, you got some good concerns though, 100%. I mean, uh, I, I don't want, we, we had that conversation, uh, I was talking about the cameras, uh, I'm glad that we got this done, uh. And, and I, I guess I was gonna comment to some things that were said, uh, one thing I learned, you said it's stat-driven, you agree it's stat-driven, I believe it's stat-driven. Um, I think nothing we do in government should be emotionally driven because, uh, we all got feelings about the way we think things should go. I think I saw a sign somewhere, political debate sign, some kind of, what do they call that, um, political satire in the newspaper I saw, well, they had a bunch of signs in the, in the crowds saying, I feel we should do this and I feel this way and I feel that way. And then the guy said, it's a fact that you feel, but your feelings aren't necessarily facts. And I'm not talking about, I'm just looking, but, and, no, but I use, I use that.
Now you looking at me?
No, 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 not, not you. I u, I use that because it, it's a, it's, it's the truth. Everything we do in, in American society locally and nationally, it, it, it may be driven by emotions, but when it hit the death of the people make the decisions, it's stat-driven. And, and, and I accept it and my job is to explain to my community, if you really want change, then get on the same page. So if you got a cluster of people that's feeling the same way from the same community, then that's where we putting cameras at. If you got a cluster of people that's feeling the same way from the same community that's concerned about their light bill going up, then that's where we put our intention at. Uh, so I say that to say, I'm running for Public Service Commissioner next time.
All right, all right.
I'll be your campaign manager.
Good for you. And we are a microcosm of that cluster, because we are, you know?
Why not? Awesome.
Awesome.
Good. Don't even couches it out, I won't.
Good.
One more comment about the.
Okay, let me just see if anybody else spoke yet and then I'll come right back to you. Is anybody else said, okay, well then, right back to you, I just.
About the, you know, being data-driven stats or whatever. Um, what Councilwoman Reed said was true, sometimes people don't make those calls because they hitting the floor every day and it's like it's a common thing. So I'm not gonna call the police because I heard gunshots outside. So that's not even in the statistics. So we do have to take those kinds of things into concern. Now also, um, you know, if you have a shooting, somebody actually gets shot or, or, or gets killed in that area also, you gonna think about moving them because that wasn't where you had one?
Not for one instance, but I can tell you that if crime stats change, in other words, the criteria is, what's our hotspots? So our hotspot is not one shooting. Our hotspot might be depending on what our stats are at the time. Our hotspot might be, what a great problem if our hotspot was where there was one shooting, that would be awesome, okay? But we're gonna have to just, the numbers are gonna tell us. In other words, if there's an area that we've had continued problems, if we've had break-ins, we've had go, uh, go, you know, people walking around with long guns, we've had shootings, we've had houses hit, we've had, I mean, I met with someone this week that their house got shot. Uh, you know.
And somebody else got shot in twice.
Oh, I know that. So, you know, that's an area of major concern, but it's gonna be driven, at least at first, by what are the worst crimes? Where are they and how much is, you know, what occurrence of them? And that's where we'll start. But it would be, like I said, a great problem if we could actually move some cameras because that area cooled down and we didn't have any more issues or those people were put where they belong or moved on or what, and part of the deterrent of these cameras are, you're gonna have some people that are gonna say, oh, well, I'll, I'll, I'll commit my crimes right outside of town because there's too many cameras. Uh, that, that's a win, I'll take it. I'm not trying to inflict it on anybody else, but, so I think over time, it's kind of like a living organism, I think over time, it's gonna morph. If we're doing our job and the cameras are doing what they need to do, then over time, we probably will be moving cameras. You know, it's gonna be a sad day if all we do is add cameras, add cameras because we, we just, you know, till we get to the city line and we have cameras everywhere, you know, then, then, then this would've failed. I mean, the whole point of this is to make it to where it responds to our community's needs and y'all aren't wrong in saying, you know, we gotta try to make people safe and there are incidents. But we'll just have to see and, and that's why we're getting crime analysts, that's why we're buying crime analyst programs, that's why we're training people. Because it's gonna be, uh, uh, something that has to be able to react to the changes that this causes. And, and let's hope they're positive changes. But that's all we can kind of do, but I don't want to leave anybody out or marginalize anybody and say, oh, well, you know, you never get a camera, you know? Uh, whatever, some sad stat, can, I hate to, you know, mock this, but you know, five people got shot over here, so, you know, we, you're not getting a camera, sorry. That, that's not what we mean by stat-driven. I think that, uh, and these people that maybe have not called, okay? I encourage them too because I, I, I need them to join the staff, my, my police officers need to know. Um, we need to have some coverage and, and know where we need to go, if something's happening that they're not calling about, you know, I, I, we can react to what we don't know. Yes, ma'am.
I agree with you. Oh, go ahead.
Yeah.
Now finish.
Okay, thank you, yes, ma'am.
I agree with you, but, I mean, I know that, I know that happens in our community a lot where people get to a point where they don't call. Someone broke into my garage the other day, stole my bicycle, trashed my car and broke my glove compartment, I don't know what they thought was in there. And I was in my backyard. And so I didn't call the police because I'm like, it's a property crime, they got a lot of stuff going on out here. And so I didn't call.
I would've called.
I would've called.
But, you know, I, I didn't call. And so I know that that happens because I'm like, I know what our police force is dealing with in New Iberia, so I'm like, you know, they stole my bicycle and I'm pissed because I only rode it twice, but that's a small thing. Yeah, I mean, I, it was brand new. But, you know, to me, that was because I know what the police force is dealing with, I'm like, you know what? I'm just gonna go have to eat this because they're, they got bigger problems in New Iberia because I'm hearing gunshots when I go to sleep at night. So I'm just saying that there, I just want us to also think, stats are great, but you know, stats tell the story you want them to tell. So let's just make sure that we are touching communities that over time, I don't know how far they're going back, if they're just going back to the years that they've been in, in existence.
Well, since it's the only records, I don't know me to be a smart, a, a smart person, but since it's the only records we have, we'll be able to go back.
Well, I didn't know if y'all had records from the Sheriff's Department or anything.
But not, not to mention, I can tell you about that, I can tell you about the West End and the crime, all them neighborhoods, what they do, what they do. Them neighborhoods, all, all them neighborhoods done switched, the whole game done switched. They ain't selling dope on the corners like they used to on every, I'm telling, I'm bringing you up to date, you say you wasn't here, let me bring you up to date. Trust me on this one. The, every corner on the block had a dope house, a dope dealer, that's, that's over now. They don't do that like that, like that, and most of the recent stats gonna be the best stats compared to that. The way the Sheriff's Department did things and the city police back before old four did things and had to do things, they didn't have the level of what they have now going on right now. Most of the dope on the street right now is prescription drugs, fentanyl, oxycontin, you know what I'm saying, uh, you know? You don't even hear about crack no more, I'm just saying, it's, it done changed a whole lot, like, fast. So, no, but I'm just saying, when they talk about, and, and I agree we off the topic, but we're talking about putting cameras in every location based on stats, I mean, you gotta do what you saw yesterday, you can't go back 15 years ago because the Sheriff's Department really had a different animal they was dealing with, I promise you. Guns is the number one thing right now on the streets. That's the number one thing on the street right now.
Agreed. And ask my officers who work the streets every day.
Number one thing on the streets. And it's, and it, and it, and it, and you're right, we all off, I've been thought we off topic, but they open the subject, so.
Well, Freddie said we can talk about whatever we need to talk about, so we're not off topic.
Well, I'm not getting into that, I'm all right with it, I like to talk and debate. But my point is, guns is the issue. And I'm gonna tell you, Second Amendment don't allow you to go take a gun off of somebody on their side walking down the street with a camera anyway. Can't do that. So you really, when you talking about taking guns off the street with cameras, that because people got them on their side, it's legal to walk with a gun on his, on your side?
I'm not talking about that.
What I'm saying though.
Yeah.
And guess what? Shooting in the air, they'll never shoot, they shooting in the air, they playing with a gun, they wanna see how it sound, they wanna, whatever. I think it's crazy, but let them people do their job is my point, let the police department do their job. I'm saying that and just, just to the, I ain't saying it to nobody else. Let them do their job, because I think they know, and if they don't do their job, I think as city council people, we're sometimes proactive and sometimes reactive. And when I say that is, if, if a house is on fire on Lombard Street and I'm not on Lombard Street, I'm going to that fire. You follow what I'm saying? If they got a house on fire on Ann Street, I'll hear about it the next day. You see, I don't prevent fires, but I respond to fires, because I'm not a firefighter. I try to prevent crime, but I'm not a crime fighter. I am a legislator that give the crime fighters resources to fight the crimes. That's my deal. If I see something, I say something as a regular citizen, not just because I'm a, I call the police. Ask them on Lombard, Wester Avenue, and all of that, if I don't call the police.
I mean, I call on, on Lombard too.
They called me a cop, when I got elected, they say I was a cop. And guess what, I accepted it politely, because guess what, I'm not a criminal. If I was a criminal and a cop, then I would be, something would be wrong with me. That's right, something would be wrong with me, but I'm, I'm an honest citizen that can call the cops when you break in my house, when you tre- when you do anything wrong. And, if I call the cops, so, y'all, I'm just saying, I be listening to y'all. If I call the cops for that guy that stole my bicycle, I might stop somebody that's going to go rob a bank. I call the cops for everything, because I'm proactive today. I'm going to, we're going to put you in the system. You want to be a thief, you're going to be in the system. My house going to be in the system, my car going to be in the system, my street going to be in the system. That man, they'll call the cops. They got some people I grew up around, that people know one thing, don't cut the red man yard, don't do none of that, that man, they'll call the cops. That's who I'm, that's who I am.
I mean, I've called the cops in the past when they stole rockers off my thing.
I'm not questioning about that, because I know, I know you made a conscious decision.
Because of, because it was a little property issue, and I figured, you know, the police are dealing with some other things.
And the other thing, I figure if we call the police for them small things, we got a better chance to fix what we got going on. Those little petty crimes turn into bigger crimes by the same person, because they think they could got, get away with it. That's why that happens. And then with the police calling them with, I'm going to tell you, and the chief will tell you, and the assistant chief will tell you. When I hear gunshots, the first thing I tell them, chief, I don't want to send y'all into a line of fire, but I think they got some gun shooting such and such street. If I was a cop, I wouldn't gone directly into the gun shooting. Because guess what my only alternative is? I got to go there shooting, and then guess what, every group going to come talk about your shot people. Let, let's be real. So, I got to thank for the safety of the police officers, so when I call them, they come back. That's how I look at it. I'm sorry, I've been around this neighborhood all my life, seeing how we operate. And we scared the police, trust me.
What do you mean by we?
The neighborhood that I live in.
Oh.
The neighborhood that I live in, how we operate, you know what I meant.
No, I wasn't sure.
Tell you after the meeting, but I ain't telling you now.
No, I'm,
I know how we operate.
I, I agree with you, although I'm, I just, my whole point was, I just want to make sure that we're not just covering the parks and the, the shopping centers, that we are using some of these cameras in areas where there's crime and people want to feel safe. That's the only issue I was trying to bring to the table. I don't know how we got off on it, but I'm just saying.
It's okay.
But, Freddie said we can talk about whatever, so I'm just saying.
Because it's good conversation, and it is related to our community. If you get off that it's not our community, I don't stop you. But, if you, if it's about our community, and look, a hundred cameras are going for crime, twenty-five cameras are going to where people congregate. So, we're, you know, the major bulk of the cameras, as I've said from the beginning, are going from the crime stats.
Can I say one more thing? Because I forgot this, since I ran it a lot and missed this part, the most important thing. I know how this job work too. Certain people call, they want a camera in their yard, they want a light in their yard, they want a police in front of their house. And then I'm the best councilman in the world. That, that's what I don't want to entertain. I got a whole community to make safe. You know, so I, I'm, I don't get into that.
My people don't call me and ask me for that level.
I'm telling you.
They don't, but they, they just, you know, when I'm around in the community, it's like, oh, when y'all going to put those cameras up, because, you know? We're hoping it's going to stop some crime.
Be a hero for all.
One voice can seem like a million voices, I noticed about this job.
Yeah.
Trust me, the people that are asking for it are people who are in areas where there is crime going on. So, I take what they say as being something that I need to pay attention to, because these are the same people that are saying, I, I don't feel safe going outside. So, I'm just, want to make sure we cover some of our communities with these cameras, that we all, you know, voted to get.
And we will. And we will, okay, is there any other discussion or?
Last, last little,
We as criminals.
Last little tidbit, last night.
Yes, sir.
I, I wasn't sure what you were talking about, I wasn't starting to be mean or anything.
Okay.
Last night,
Mr. Brusler, you have the floor now.
Two door, two, my doors rang and shattered and shook. We couldn't find who did it, but it scares you to hell. Scares you, everybody's not available, not immune from this. We got to watch all the time, all the neighborhoods.
Yep.
Tell my neighborhood too, keep an eye, we should keep preaching.
Yep.
And our neighborhood watch, you know, different things, but we got to protect ourselves. You know, we're looking, but, uh, found a footstep in the, in the ant pile. One going this way and one going the other way, and we saw that, they had nothing in that ant pile the night before, because we were going to get rid of it next day. Two stockers put a good footprint into that ant pile, exactly who was stepping around.
Well, the person who visited me that Sunday, they come back, they got cameras in the garage now, so I will catch you.
Good. All right. I think we've had a nice discussion.
It's over, Freddie.
Oh, last comment?
Yes, ma'am. You a joke?
No.
You weren't joking?
No, I wasn't joking, last comment.
I wish you were joking.
He was, he was hopeful, he really was hopeful, sorry.
I was too.
Last thing I want to say is, um, I didn't vote for the franchise agreement and all, but now we have this, since that's done, and we have this one point seven five million dollars, and we're going to do some things with it. I will vote for it now, but, you know I'm going to call on all of you when the rates come before the public service commission to stand up for our constituents. Just wanted to say that.
Yes, ma'am, okay.
I'm running for public service commissioner, so you're good.
So, talk to, talk to Marlo, and we're finished with this item, okay? Uh, we're going to move on to councilman's remarks.
No, we didn't vote, we got to vote, I said.
We talked so long, I forgot.
Turned out to be like a discussion item.
Yeah, a very big one. Um, okay, then, if all discussion's done, please vote your machines. Thank you.
Do it again, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Thank you very much. Whoo, that was a long one. Okay, now we're going to move on to councilman's remarks. Councilwoman Brooke Markad.
Thank you.
Start with you.
Um, I just wanted to let everyone know that registration is open for Evangel in Little League, so go sign those kids up for baseball, um, or tee ball or softball. It's currently seventy-five dollars for the first child, anything after is fifty dollars, any other child. Uh, it goes up on January first to a hundred dollars for your first child, and then seventy-five dollars any child after. Also, the homeless shelter is selling fundraiser shirts, uh, twenty-seven dollars. Contact the homeless shelter if you want to order, that's it.
Thank you.
I, I have an announcement from, uh, GPAL. Let me get my phone open.
Oh, yeah.
Did you?
Well, you're going to make it, I, I, you make it, I'll go make it then.
Uh, that's on the sixteenth, GPAL, uh, Garret Paul, Acson, Lewis Foundation is doing Yuletide on the west side. That's December the sixteenth in the West End Park, from three PM to seven PM. Uh, I wanted to make that announcement, I think that's all I have for right now, I didn't know you.
No, that's good, because I, she'd asked me to make it too, so, that's fine.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Christmas coming up, watch the kids off, out of school for at least two to three weeks. You know, very serious around the schools with the new cameras too. So, watch y'all speed, and, and that's all I have there.
Thank you.
So, uh, just remember that we have Food for Families coming up next week, um, at the Show Game Festival building, all the, all the food is going to stay locally in our, in our, in our pantry, so, please try, try to give as much as you can, because, uh, uh, food prices inflation now are high, and we can use all the help. So, uh, and if you want to work, they, we're looking for volunteers. Also, just to mention, I, I, you know, I kind of like to, uh, reflect back on decisions that this council makes and just see how effective they are. So, I took some time after work and went sitting in some of the school zones in my truck and just watching. Very, very obvious, let me mention it to Freddie, very obvious that people are attentive and slowing down. Uh, maybe it's me, but I've noticed that people are attentive and noticing that there is some changes and slowing down. So, I think, I think at least from my visual perspective, that will have an effect on the safety of our kids currently, and it just started. So, I'm sure we'll hear some repercussions eventually, but, uh, I think it was a very good move on the spot out port, I really do.
I passed tonight, I said, uh, what I had to say.
Yes, ma'am.
Hey, just, since Ricky mentioned the school zones, um, we were supposed to put one on Cherokee Street, because that is their route to school, and there is not one, there's not a camera on Cherokee Street, and we need one. Because they, they are flying sixty-five miles an hour down that street. Remember, that's the safe route to school.
I'll pass it on.
Okay. Um, uh, so, on January twelfth, uh, Passon School, I'm sorry, Freddie.
Oh, Passon.
Yeah. Um, on January twelfth, we're going to have another mobile market where people can come out and buy fruits and vegetables for, you know, very cheap price. So, um, please come out, you know, you can come and get a lot of grocery for very little money, and, I mean, some really nice, uh, fruits and vegetables. So, um, I know, we had quite a few people that came out for the one we held before Thanksgiving, and so, it was really, really nice. Um, we also had Iberia Comprehensive out there, we had them checking blood pressure and everything. They also have a mobile, um, like, exam room. We didn't get, we didn't have as many people take advantage of that, but if we're able to get them next time around, we will again, and we hope that more people will take advantage of it. Also, we're going to be having a women in business, uh, seminar. Uh, probably the second week of January, because I didn't get confirmation yet on the first week, so we'll probably go second week of January, uh, probably the Thursday. And, um, it's for women who want to grow their business, women who are, um, who have these side hustles, and they want to turn it into a business, they're not, maybe they're not sure, they don't have the funds. And we're also going to talk about micro loans to get your credit for your business kind of started, so that you can actually build credit and hopefully grow your business that way as well. Um, and then, well, you'd already made the GPAL thing, okay, that's it, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to save my comments for the grand finale, which is the last meeting, and I'll be attending.
Oh, you're going to cry for us.
All right.
I might. For you, especially you.
All right.
And remember, three minutes.
We're talking about that now? Where were you earlier? All right. I don't really have any remarks tonight, it's been a good meeting, uh, next meeting is December nineteenth. And, uh, yes, sir.
You want to talk maybe about the Christmas parade, maybe?
Uh, yeah, Christmas parade's this weekend, um, so,
I'll leave it for you.
Yeah, be safe, have fun, um, it's, it's coming, um.
What time? Just five?
Yeah, well, it starts at, at five thirty. Yeah, and there is a chance, just stay tuned, there is a chance with the weather, we, we might, we don't know. Uh, we think it's still for Saturday right now, but they, they could be a change. So, as soon as we can get that out, we should know tomorrow, so that was what my hesitation was.
I just,
Uh, it's set for Saturday, hopefully we can, but it's going to happen one way or the other. So, tomorrow, I think the, you know, association that's putting it on will make the determination if, if it would have to be moved.
We'll have a Christmas parade this weekend.
But, we're having a Chris- a Christmas parade this weekend.